I call this meeting in order. I'll rise for the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any changes to the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, if you could add item, under action items, an additional item G, request for a traffic study to lower the speed limit on Highway 65.
Okay.
Our County 65.
Alright. Alright, let's see, can I get a motion to approve the agenda then?
So move.
Can I get a second? Second. Home, fair, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. Open forum, would anybody like to speak up front? Okay. Consent agenda, approval of the minutes, approval of the bills and purchase orders, approval of investments, ambulance department bad debt, fire department bad debt, EMT hire, fire department hires, pay voucher number one, county road 65 sidewalk improvements, and there's a gambling resolution. Can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda.
Okay, got a first, good, I got a second?
Second.
Round, fair, say aye?
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. We are on to reports, police department month report, Chief Moss.
Can I make this brief for everybody? July 2019, we had in our traffic area 29 citations issued, 99 herb warnings, two writ warnings. 2019, we had 346 calls and requests for service, and last year was 423. We ended last year on ICR 3012, and this year we're at 2666. We're down a few calls from last year. It's quite alright. 26 agency assists, pretty common in that area. Some things to consider for next month, and we did briefly discuss them, or at least brought them up for consideration at last month's meeting, which was a little scarce on the council side, but that's quite alright. ATV ordinance, nuisances will be coming through the public hearing, as well as potential action for the council. Policy manual, we'll have to get our policy manual approved or adopted by the council, as there is a new state mandated policy that was put in place, something we already did in practice and had in our previous policy manual, but there's some new changes that the state wanted, so we added those into what we currently had, related to sexual assault investigations, so nothing major. I want to thank everybody that came out for Night to Unite, and everybody that was able to be down there to either represent the organization, or to just be part of it. It's always great to see folks coming out and look forward to next year again. Any questions?
Alright, thanks Chief. City Attorney Report, Scott?
Um, you have my report with the agenda. I don't have much to add, other than, as Chief Moss mentioned, next month will be a bigger month. We've got a number of nuisances we'll be asking the council to review, and also the ATV ordinance, which will be asking you to review as well. Unless the council has any questions for me on anything, that's all I'm gonna do.
Alright, thanks Scott, appreciate it. General Fund Financial Quarterly Reports, Tessa?
Good evening. So, we are a little over halfway through the year. General funds, both the revenues and expenses are running a little low, and most of that's from the property tax and state aid. We got a chunk of the first half in July, so it wasn't included in the second quarter report. We also have administrative services that come in at year end, and one of our larger building permits was issued in the third quarter. However, interest income has been running high in all of our accounts. We've already surpassed the budget, so that's good news. As far as expenses go, relating to the building permits, the fees to our building inspector are paid in July, so those were not included in the second quarter. And then, as far as public works, we have all of the, most of the snow and ice and streets for the winter were covered in the first quarter. In MADA funds, the only thing that's kind of out of the norm there is we had a reimbursement from the state of Minnesota for petrol fund, or petrol fuel on the craft lot. Ambulance fund is right on track. There were miscellaneous expenses that were a little higher. They had to get a new washing machine and some repairs in the ambulance bay, some things added. Fire Department, as in with the past, it's running a little low. The payments from the townships come in at year end, as well as all the salaries they're made at year end. There was some training reimbursements from the state of Minnesota, as well as some sales proceeds from sale of old vehicles. One thing that's kind of new, the special revenue funds, you may see they look like they're way over budget in both revenues and expenses. We had a new fund relating to the CDBG grant that was approved by the council in 2018. So we have received some reimbursement from the state of Minnesota, and then in turn, we've also had to expense the funds back out. Capital project funds, we started incurring more costs with the HVAC improvements, and we'll see more of that coming towards the end of third quarter, probably fourth quarter when they do the repair here. Street improvement costs have started in second quarter, but again, we'll have most of those in the third quarter. And debt service, we've paid all of the debt service expenses already for the year, other than the second interest payments, and then we'll receive more of the revenue relating to the tax levy at the end of the year. Anybody have any questions on anything?
Nope, thank you. City Administrator?
I had the opportunity to meet with Jody Teich from the county, the engineer, to discuss not just the bridge project and the Archrock Rapids, but just in general, looking at what the county's going to be doing over the next five years, and how it's going to align and tie with our capital improvement plan. I am hoping that in September, I will be able to bring back a recommendation from you about anything that's related to the bridge. So, that's what I have on that at this time. I've sent out information on the craft lot to two different development groups, and I talked to one of them today, who has expressed an interest, but they're in the middle of trying to get a bunch of other projects done, so they're not quite ready to do anything yet. I've got a couple more leads that I'm going to be following up with that, and I've also got a couple of folks relative to the commercial side of it, that we're going to be talking to as well. I've started talking to our department heads about not even really succession planning, kind of succession planning and retention, that type of thing, when it comes to employees, just because, you know, we just want to kind of make sure we have a really good plan in place for that type of thing. We have not completed, the city of Melrose has not completed a strategic plan in over 10 years. It is certainly something that I think is a good idea to do, looking at your mission, looking at your vision, where you're headed. I know that in 2012, I believe, you guys met and probably went through what you had in your strategic plan from 2009, but I would like to see the council consider having somebody come in and work just for an hour visioning session to start with, and that would be the council, the utilities, and department heads, and then it would just be a one-hour meeting with a consultant to kind of talk about, you know, visioning, just so that we're all kind of heading in the same direction, or what we see, where we want to, where Melrose needs to go in the next 10 years for growth. And that'll tie back to this comp plan, but it will also tie to other things that are happening in the community. You know, where do we value certain things, that type of thing. So, that is something that I just want to plant the seed with the council to consider, as we kind of talk about budgets going into 2020. It may be something that we want to include. It's actually probably something we could even do still in 2019, because the first part of it isn't a real, well, it's always expensive when you hire a consultant. No offense, Mike, but, you know, it's always one of those things, so you just kind of, you know, but if you're just doing an hour session, it's not like it's a huge budget item for you to undertake at that time. So that's something I really would like you to think about. The other thing that I really want to talk about, and kind of come up with a plan for, is sort of the housing. We hear that a lot, every, all the businesses that I have been talking to, you know, they cite housing as an issue or a challenge, and how do we deal with housing? Whether it be, you know, people coming off the farm and kind of getting into town just to have those patio homes, whether it be multifamily workforce housing, so there's many, many different things. I think we can develop strategies around housing. So, that is certainly something that I would like to have the council consider as well. And then the last thing that I will mention, and we'll talk about more when we get to the budget stuff, is security and safety, primarily the city center building, but long-term, all of our buildings. So, that's what I have, Mr. Mayor and council, and I will take any questions that you may have with me.
You guys have any questions?
No.
No, we did strategic planning, oh, that was years ago, and it is very beneficial, and that would be great to do again. Alright. We're on to action items, 6A, daylight court assessments.
So, Harlan Hector had purchased two tax forfeited properties in daylight court, lots six and seven in block one. Mr. Hector had purchased these lots for 1,900 each, and stated he was unaware of any assessments on them. On July 26th, the city made a motion, on July 26th in 2016, because these lots were part of a special assessments and tax forfeited property. Back in 2016, the city made a motion to reduce the assessments in daylight court, that if somebody were to purchase lots in block one, lots six and seven, they would waive, the city would waive the interest and reassess each one of those at $25,462. The city then further said that if somebody combines those into one lot, they'd essentially only have to pay the $25,462 for that assessment. At the regular June 13th meeting of this year, the council further defined the policy as follows. Assessments under $20,000 shall be paid in full immediately, and an option be given to those with assessments greater than $20,000 to be assessed over a seven-year period, at an interest rate of 2% over the average municipal bond yield. If a building permit is not pulled within two years of purchase, the balance is due in full. If the property is resold, the assessments are due immediately upon the sale of that property. Mr. Hector would like to build a twin home and combine lots six and seven, and is requesting that the assessment be reduced to $12,000. This did go before the MADA board on August 8th, and at that meeting, they are recommending the assessments as per the prior arrangement, which states if lot six and seven are merged, waive interest for both lots, and waive assessment on lot six, and reassess newly merged lot at $25,462. So then, there was a motion... Yeah, I don't know if that's right. This wasn't the MADA motion. I don't think that's, it wasn't Mr. Clausen. I can't remember who at MADA made the motion. Somebody made the motion at MADA.
Yeah, it was very unanimous, and very, said that's where they're going to stand.
So, Miss, I did just, Mr. Hector asked that I bring it to you, and I wanted to bring it to the council, so it is before you this evening to, the MADA board, of course, is just a recommending body to the council, and the council's the one that has the final decision-making when it comes to this. So, at this time, Mr. Mayor, I would request that the council take action on this particular item.
And I remember back in the day, we did have a couple people that did talk, and they wanted it at that price, and we, you know, like, at a low price, and we were very stringent about that. Because, yeah, if they were going to do $12,000, it would have been sold a long time ago.
That's what I remember too.
Yeah, so... Who wants to make a motion, or you want to make a motion?
We want to do, leave it at 25, because that's for MADA. But that's for both lots, right?
That would be for...
So that's basically taking 25,000 off top.
Yeah.
So it ends up in effect being, you're still only paying $12,000 a lot, basically, if you did a $25,000 assessment.
And was that his intention through the letter, or was he looking at?
He just wanted the assessments...
$12,000 for both lots?
Yep, he wanted just to reduce to be $12,000. Mr. Hector's here too, if you have any questions with him, but that's my understanding, and that's what he had requested, so...
No, that was, um...
What, is this exactly what all we have on every lot, hold there?
There is one lot that is not that way. There is one lot that sits between two residential properties right now that is what you would call a substandard lot. It's not necessarily buildable, and that one's reduced more. So, I believe, I don't know the exact dollar amount on that one, but that one is not at $25,000. That one's less.
And that one was more of a triangle lot.
Yep, and it was not one you could build on. So I think that one was reduced down to like, maybe 12 grand, I'm not even sure. I could check into it, but, and then there's two other lots out there that would be the same price.
Yeah, and we have gone down in the past years over it, so, sorry. That's, like you said, MADA was very adamant about where they wanted to keep it at, so... Alright, so I'll make a motion.
Do they want to keep it at the two-year?
Yeah, I don't think MADA, MADA didn't even look at the policy part of this, so they didn't even address the policy that you guys adopted in June. They simply reaffirmed what was done in, on July 26th of 2016. And that, back then, they said that they could combine those and get it down to $25,462.
And it's over a seven-year period, right? You can do that?
Well, it appears as though there's some precedent, in that from prior discussions about these types of property, MADA seems to have a pretty good handle on it, so I'll make a motion, then we follow the recommendation of MADA.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. First and a second, home, fair, say aye?
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. Alright, 6B, community festival, temporary on-sale liquor license.
So, on September 6th, 7th, and 8th, there is going to be what's dubbed the Melrose Fall Festival that the New Munich J.C.'s are going to be putting on. It is a rodeo that will be taking place at the craft lot, along with activities that will be taking place down at Sock River Park. We have met three times, I believe, with the, some of the organizers from the group, and we have talked about, you know, what has to happen. It's been a really good conversation. We're going to meet with Gary in the park on the 26th, and go through the map and see exactly what they need. That's a week or, almost two weeks ahead of when it happens. So, there's, anything that we've asked of them, they've provided. The one outstanding item right now is on the craft lot, they need to have a separate insurance certificate, and they provided us with information today from the rodeo folks, what their insurance looks like. So it's a matter of our insurance people telling us if that's going to be enough. Typically, you're going to have us listed as an insurer, and it's like a million-dollar policy. General liability, what they were asking for, what our insurance was asking for, was a, was an additional million dollars of what they call automobile, so I didn't quite understand it myself. So, I threw it back to, those guys provided us with information from their insurance person. I brought it to Rayanne, and Rayanne said she'll get back to me. So, that is one of the outstanding items. I'm going to let Patty address sort of the liquor side of it, but both Patty, I, and Craig all had a chance to look at the community festival license, and we didn't see an issue with that itself. So we recommend the approval of the application. They've already brought in the check for the deposit, and they've paid the fee. We've provided them with the map. They're willing to work with our staff to see where we can set all this up. So, it's just right now, it seems like that's kind of the one outstanding item that we have, is really where does that liability insurance fall? Because of the fact that we have two separate areas where this is going to take place, but they're owned by the city. The rodeo itself is not covered under our League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust. So it's a separate policy, and that's why they have to put it in place, so... And that's what I would have to say about that. Representatives from the New Munich J.C.'s are here. If you have any questions that you would like to ask them, they're here, and I'm sure could be happy to answer those for you. And again, Patty, do you want to talk about the liquor license itself, then?
They completed the community festival application, all the other paperwork I did receive. They have the certificate updated with the craft lot on there today, so I should have all the documentation I need. I'll submit it after approval. I'll submit it to the state there for them.
Okay.
And that certificate is both, it's the liquor license plus the general liability that we carry. Yeah, it's on both. It's perfect, so I don't know if that makes a difference too, because like, ours is a million-dollar policy through the J.C.'s, plus, I know the rodeo has their own.
Yeah, and it looks like the rodeo's was a million-dollar policy also. We just need that clarified from our insurance. Because if it's not something that's covered under League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust, they, you know, I don't know. I have to, I'm relying on our insurance people to tell us what we need.
So it appears as though we have enough million-dollar policies covered.
I think we have enough million-dollar policies, yeah.
For an empty gravel lot?
Yeah.
Did you want to say anything about, you know, would you like to come up and tell them, tell the people about it? You know, we get a lot of people that watch this on TV, YouTube and stuff. It's a good, good way to get people here.
So the rodeo will be on September 6th and 7th at night, and then we'll have a band after. That will be down at the park. The rodeo will be at the lot. And then, on Saturday day, there will be a car show, food vendors. We will have some other craft vendors involved. That's what we know as of right now. We will have bounce houses. The bounce houses, we were told, are going to range between the ages of like two to like ninety. So, anyone can really go in them. And then, on the 8th, might, we'll check in to see if we can find a church, to the church in the park. So it'd be a full weekend of events down there.
Alright, I'm excited for it. Thank you. So, is this, is this for their liquor license, or is it for the full festival?
It's the liquor, for the community festival license, and it's a very...
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve all this, please?
I'll make a motion to approve contingent, an agreement from our insurance company that there's proper coverage.
Alright, a first and a second, can I?
Second.
Alright, home, fair, say aye?
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. Police Department hire.
So tonight, we're bringing forth a candidate after 22 applications, and being narrowed down to four interviews from the committee that we had put together. We narrowed it down to Alyssa Mingerford, and she is currently a full-time Belgrade officer. She works part-time in Sock Center of Osakis, and was a part-time Benson officer as well. So she's a busy young lady, which we're happy to see that she's willing to put that much effort into learning, learning the craft at this point. This would be contingent upon, obviously, council approval, a successful background, psychological exam, and a physical exam. I'm about 94% complete with the background, and everything's looking good so far, so I don't perceive that being an issue, and we'll work out the remaining details if we receive council approval. The idea is to start her at start in the pay scale, which would be an adequate wage for her from where she's coming from, so...
Is there any questions? Alright, can I get a motion to approve, please?
So...
Can I get a second?
Second.
Alright, home, fair, say aye?
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. Thanks, Chief. Streets Park Water, Wastewater Maintenance Worker Job Description.
So, we've actually hired this position, but realize that we did not get the actual job description approved by the council. So I'm asking for you to simply approve what the ad hoc committee, it was on the packet. We just didn't, you guys didn't take action on the actual job description, so I'm just asking that you approve that job description.
Alright, can I get a motion to approve?
So move.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Home, fair, say aye?
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. Finance Director Pay Adjustment, can I, for when Tessa was acting administrator when we were finding clean? Can I get a motion to approve?
So move.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Home, fair, say aye?
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. And again, publicly, thank you, Tessa, for all you did. Did such a great job, really helped us out. Thanks. Okay, F, Resolution Number 2018-2019-42, supporting 2019 Minnesota Broadband Grant Application. If I need to say anything, or...
Basically, the city's working with our great communications to submit a border-to-border grant application to bring fiber out to the I-94 industrial park. They should find out in January whether or not it's awarded, but the fact that the city is willing to put money into it should help. So, I'm recommending that we participate at 25% of the cost, which is roughly $10,319, and also share a joint trench. We'll talk about the trench when we talk about the capital improvements in the budget. But the $10,319 is not a general levy item. That actually comes from TIF, TIF proceeds that we have in that particular development district, so that's a municipal district number seven. And the way the TIF reads is you can use 20% of the funds that are in that district for things other than, in this case, it was other than warrior boats. So, we would be able to use that money, and this is an eligible expense under that, so that's where the money would come from to pay for our portion of it. So I'm recommending approval of the resolution at this time, please.
Can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Home, fair, say aye?
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. Then G would be the Genial Speed Limit Change.
Yep, so basically, we have been meeting with Genial about some things related to their plant, and one of the requests that was made is if they, we would consider looking at reducing that traffic speed on 65 east of Genial. Well, in order to do that, Jody has to make that call. The county has to make that call. So, she's asking that if that's something that you are requesting, that we just formalize it in a motion, and I can forward that to her, and then Mindad actually is the one who ends up doing the traffic study. So, it's just, it's not very far, it's just, they, the, Genial had made the request with the amount of traffic and the volume on that road. They just would like it to be slowed down a little bit.
And we're making the request to kind of get the ball rolling with the streets?
Correct. Yeah, that's exactly what we're doing.
Well, with question with that, since, would that entail moving that sign back further than, for...
Probably somewhere up in the cemetery, I would guess.
Yeah, that'd be a discussion we have to plan, where they place their determined 30 mile an hour, well, start, and they get the best of the design for the vehicles, especially if it's something that's wanting to view for people entering the city.
And now with that sidewalk going out there, and it's sort of right on that curve, are we probably looking at, seeing if the county would consider putting crosswalk lights there?
We haven't had that conversation at all. I think this is the starting point of everything, and we'll see what happens.
I think that might be something we better put in the back burner, though, because that's right on that curve there. You never know what might happen, so...
Are we looking into getting more of those speed signs? We have to budget for any more of them if there has been... I mean, I think they probably do their job, but is there other spots that, you know, instead of moving that one, would we just add another one, more towards, like the runs? I wonder how many people come into town and just don't slow down until they see that flashing sign. There's a fair dollar.
I mean, on the bridge, I know, it's like, that's effective. It's going to if you go over thirty, so, not that I would know.
That's what I'm wondering, if that's something that, you know, maybe that's something that we do instead of actually...
And those were about 5,000, right?
Uh, they were 3,600 at that time. I don't know. I mean, you can change the speeds. It keeps the honest people on this.
Alright, great. Alright, okay. Alright, can I get a motion to approve that?
I'll make a motion.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, home, fair, say aye?
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. No old business, no new business, informational items. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Home, fair, say aye?
Aye.
Pose, motion carried, needing adjourned.